This House meeting comes from maybe September the 18th, 2025 is now called the border. HK's not going to be here tonight, he's on a trip and will be back in time. So if there, if you would care to lead us in prayer, please?
Yeah, let's pray. Lord, thank you for many blessings, Lord, and for being with us tonight as we gather here to do the city's business. Lord, be with us tonight and help us to make wise decisions and decisions that you would be pleased with, Lord. Be with the sick, the hurting, the lonely that haven't come to know you yet, Lord. Be with us, be with our county, be with our state, be with our country, Lord, be with the world as we break out in revival in your precious name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume everyone's had time, but look over the minutes from our last meeting. So if they have, I just need a motion to approve those meetings, please?
Oh, to make.
Any consent, all in favor, any opposed? Okay, the first thing that we have on the business tonight is the first reading of ordinance 2025-006. It's the ad valorem tax.
Sir, Lord is levying imposing ad valorem taxes on the city of Jamestown for general municipal purpose for fiscal year 25, 26, on all taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of Jamestown, Kentucky. Whereas it is necessary for the city of Jamestown, Kentucky to impose ad valorem taxes on real and grossland property for the purpose of providing revenue necessary for the support and operation of the government of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky. And whereas the city council of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky is required by state law to establish a tax rate and other guidelines regarding payment on taxes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky as follows. The purpose is to support the operation of the government of the city of Jamestown and payment of debts and expenses incurred by the city of Jamestown, Kentucky for fiscal year 2025, 2026, the Shelby, everybody's levying, and impose an ad valorem tax on each hundred dollars of assessed taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of the city of Jamestown. Real property, including real property of public service companies shall be taxed at thirteen point five cents per hundred assessed value as determined by the Department of Revenue Assessed Valuation. Personal property, including personal property of public service companies shall be taxed at thirteen point five cents per hundred assessed value determined by the Department of Revenue Assessed Valuation. Financial institutions measured by the deposits in the institution located in the jurisdiction of the city of Jamestown shall be taxed at point zero two five percent of the deposits per car as 136.575, subsection two. All taxes paid in honor of or for July, December 31st, 2025 shall receive a discount of two percent for the total tax value of the tax bill. All taxes paid after January 31st, 26th will incur a penalty of ten percent in addition to tax payment. All person firms owing 2025 property taxes which are required to be published in a local newspaper and delinquent taxes for fiscal year 2025, 2026 shall pay in addition to the tax owed and a ten percent penalty in additional three dollars to cover the cost of the newspaper publication. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage of publication mode.
Basically what that breaks down to is our taxes has reduced a little bit from thirteen point seven down to thirteen point five. So it's a little bit of reduction there. And those tax bills are set, they are first in November. So I know there's already been people asking, I've had a couple texts, people asking me when the tax bills will come out. And I think they get a little confused because the county goes out so much quicker than it did before. But that is, the cities will go out November 1st. And a little bit dropped there. So a second thing is our first reading of ordinance 2025-007. And this is the ATDs on the city street. And of course, as everybody knows, I'm sure the county has passed that the ATDs will be legal to ride in the county. And so this is our first reading of the ordinance that will pertain to the city.
So it's related to street legal special purpose vehicles. Whereas 2025 Kentucky Acts, chapter 89 herein after the act become law on March 26th, 2025, allows for the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on certain highways within the Commonwealth of Kentucky if allowed by ordinance of the local government within whose jurisdictional boundaries the highway is located. Whereas the act becomes effective on Friday, June 27th, 2025. Whereas the city of Jamestown is determined that it is appropriate to allow the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on specific highways within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Jamestown in accordance with the act of this ordinance. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Jamestown, Russell County Commonwealth of Kentucky. The definitions set forth, section one, subsection one of 2025 Kentucky Acts, chapter 89, and is made amended in the future by the Kentucky General Assembly are adopted and incorporated by references set forth fully herein designated highways. Street legal special purpose vehicles shall be allowed to extend permanent by the act on all highways that are located within the jurisdictional limits of Jamestown, Kentucky. Exceptions, street legal special purpose vehicles shall not be allowed to operate on any highway portion thereof if it is located within the jurisdictional limits of Jamestown unless allowed by this ordinance. On a highway or portion thereof that is controlled access systems, including but not limited to interstate or parkway. On a highway or portion thereof where the United States Department of Agriculture prohibits special purpose vehicles. Street legal special purpose vehicles are prohibited from traveling a distance greater than twenty miles on a highway displaying center line pavement markings. Mini trucks shall not be operated as street legal purpose vehicles on a highway that has been constructed pursuant to federal highway programming.
So again, this is the actual first reading. Of course, next month, we will have a second reading on this. And at that time, we will be required to be there passing it. Because with the county passing it, of course, they have the right to ride those in the county. But the city is not included in that. City has to pass their own ordinance to make it legal. So next month, we'll have a second reading and be prepared to have a vote on it.
I've got a question on that one, I don't know Tyler or anybody answered mine. What was that last exception there about federal highways?
The mini trucks, those little, I'm assuming it's those little white trucks?
That didn't apply inside, inside.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions about that? The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is Mr. Derrick Coffey. And I think he's here wants to speak to us about a water line.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you will, you can go right ahead.
I'd first like to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak here for just a moment. I wrote a brief statement, if not to be redundant or wasteful, of getting me time at the meeting. I live on Ramsey Creek and I realize there haven't been any other discussions about water on this road. Ramsey Creek is split into two ends when it comes to utilities. Those who live on the lower end and those who live on the upper end. I live on the upper end with no one living in the middle. I've been told by several people how extremely costly it would be to try to cut through the rock of the lower end to run a water line. And that's been explained in detail to me. However, I live on the upper end where there is no rock to go through. Many years ago, I was responsible for running eight tenths of a mile of water line myself to accommodate two houses, a barn, and a garage. Now my adult sons would like to be able to build a home, my two sons would like to be able to build a home on the property. However, they're unable to do so because my smaller line will not accommodate any more structures. So my goal would be to have four meters in that eight tenths of a mile. Should there be any grants that would become available or the council would see any other possibilities in accomplishing this goal, I would most certainly be grateful. And again, thank you for your time and letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. And just to tell you a little bit about what, where we are with events like this. We have to, we turn in certain things that we try to get grateful for. We have, we add roads to this list periodically as people request it. Right now, I think there's maybe thirteen, well, there's thirteen?
This one's actually, Ramsey Creek's actually, it's on a different project, actually. We tied Ramsey Creek in with a tie-in to, on the other end, it's a 1058 on the other side. We need about a mile to make the loop. And we've got that and Ramsey Creek on the same, the KID4, the other project.
Can you tell me about, can you understand the?
Well, they're talking about it all the way through, is what we like. Because doing one end and doing another is not beneficial for the city. There is no water loop and it's just dead water sitting there. So you wouldn't, ideally, you wouldn't want the loop to add another feed into the bottoms. That way you can feed across, across to, across the river. The feed across the river comes from down there, too. So ideally, you would want the entire loop in. Do you know what side line you have?
I have a two inch, sir.
You've got a two inch?
And we actually went two inch and then dropped to an inch and a half and then finally dropped to an inch, that's to increase the pressure as we went along.
Do you have good pressure now or you're at?
I have adequate pressure, I have regular water on, yes, ma'am.
Will the water tower making the, down in Ramsey Creek, will that increase the pressure down that floor?
I'm sure, I mean, he's sitting on top of the hill, so it's a little different. But I'm sure the pressure, he'll have pressure. But I mean, a two inch line, the pressure's kind of the pressure you're looking at volume when you're talking about four meters coming on it. We, even, even without doing anything, let the, you know, you know how far you ran the two inch down, down the river?
About a, about a chance of a mile.
Okay, and then?
I mean, sorry, about half a mile.
Okay.
About four tenths, and then we started dropping down from that point.
Okay. We can run that through a hydrologic model and see what, what volume and pressure that you could have with four meters sitting on, though, if you, if you, if something happened, we can run a two inch. That's not ideal for us, Division of Water won't let us take one over.
Four inch line is what would be necessary?
They want three inch, at least a three inch.
Yes, sir.
Through Division one. But I can run, I can try to get with the engineers and see, run through the hydrologic portal and, and see what, what water is there.
Yes, sir.
And go from there.
Okay, thank you.
And just back to normally, what we do is we, our engineers create a profile with requests that we have, the engineers do that and sends that to the ad office. And we try to send all the support that we can to get each one of those grants approved. Well, then they vote on and score the requests from all the counties all around. Everybody that makes requests to the ad office for these grant funds. So when they score those, only the highest scored ones are the ones who won't get your grant. So far, our roads has not been scored high enough to be granted in grant money. But I have scored, actually Debbie and I met with Judy, actually on another grant that we're working on. And we've asked her to go in and try to put any support that she can in with trying to get those roads to get the higher ranking where we can, any way possible. Because we're aware there's people out there that don't have water and lots of roads that need it. But like you said, the cost is astronomical to some of them. And you, you want to try to help everybody, but can't always do that with the money that city has. But we are working and trying all the time to get those grants approved. We're working on those all the time. But Tyler, we'll check on what he's told you and we'll see what we can find out.
I'll check the profile too, the Ramsey Creek profile and see to make sure, if it's not, if it's not the profile that runs all the way through, if it's coming off the bottom side, can't remember, I remember what we done it, but it's been years ago when we put that project in. If it's not, then I'll, I'll add it to, I'll add the top to the sixteen roads or thirteen, whatever those roads are, I added on the, that project, it won't be any big deal as far as like getting that one added to it anyway.
Yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll be, like I say, we're working all the time with the ad, trying to get as many grants for. And we feel like the water is one of the most important things. Just like the water tower, when we submitted funds for the water tower, they look at, you've got a profile here for roads that may affect, and maybe on thirteen roads, let's say you have an estimate of four houses out there. That's why I've fifty-two people. And then they look at a water tower is going to affect everybody in the county, you know, pretty far out anyway. With water tower, people that's not having pressure on the lower end will get, will have pressure. And then, you know, our tower, the two we had, which is a grant they were hoping to be replaced anyway. It's kind of how they look at things is how's it going to affect more people when they are rating those programs, I think, you know, the profiles for the grant numbers.
Okay.
But we will work on it and anytime we can have a chance to get any grant money, we will do that.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome and thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, Derrick, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
So, um, let's see. I guess, uh, the, that's pretty much all we have in the new business. But just a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, I guess, is the big thing coming up is our Jeep event. It's been a lot of work done on that, that's getting close, that's October the 11th. We're expecting a good turnout, hopefully the weather and everything stays good. Everything seems to be going good on that. Tommy, Barry and I are in the committee for the city and then the 606 Club, we've had several meetings. And Tommy, do you all want to kind of update a little bit about what else going on?
Well, we've, I mean, we've, sponsors are being good to us. We've got, got several sponsors, numerous sponsors. We've got several events lined up for over there that are going to bring, we're going to have several vendors, I think, lined up. Various different kinds of vendors, there'll be some Jeeps, what I would call Jeep-specific vendors there that, you know, sell upgrades and, uh, that people can put on their Jeeps. We've got food vendors, we're going to have a kids' tent there for kids. Did she say the, like, face tattoos and stuff for kids?
Lots of different things that can do.
Bouncy houses?
Bouncy houses. And then we're going to have a show and shine, it's basically a car show for Jeeps. They're including two categories of the Jeeps that will be for like the old Willys Jeeps, World War II Willys Jeeps. And I know we've got a few of those around here because I see them on the road, I know a couple of them. So, you know, hoping to get those people to bring their old Willys Jeeps over and put it into the car show, even do the, the poker round in them if they'd like to.
Well, that's, uh, any kind of Jeep can get in, can get in the poker round of the show. The thing is, it's a seven hundred and fifty dollars first prize, so, uh, Chloe's little Jeep will probably be in that, in that.
We'll go for it.
You know?
Can I put a Jeep sign on my Hyundai?
You might, Chloe. And seven fifty, five hundred, two fifty?
Seven fifty first, five hundred second, two fifty third, and then a hundred dollar.
Oh, it's worth, worth it, so, I'd be in the room with that.
And they pitched me to be a judge because I think I know a lot about poker.
Well, you sound right.
Said, I, when I was in banking school, I was the Texas Hall of Fame champion.
Must've been a weak term. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Have you got your check yet?
No.
Going to have the flex ramp there and just the ramp they put up, I guess. So we've got these Jeeps with all the suspension kits and stuff under them. You can pull front wheel up on the ramp, see how much you can flex on it.
The shine that comes through town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to, once it gets dark, which, registration will start at eleven. They're doing online registration there. 606 Jeeping, J E E P I N Association Facebook page. You can just, actually, you can just go Facebook and put in, search Jeeps are wild and they'll, you'll bring it up. But you can pre-register online on that, there's a link on that, Jeeps are wild Facebook page. There's a link there where you can click to go, um, pre-register.
Nice t-shirts, too.
Yeah, you can buy t-shirts on there and give you a little discount if you do, if they do pre-register. You will give them a little discount, what'd she say, thirty-five if you pre-register? And then forty the day of the event, and that's the end of the poker round. And then it discounts, you will just stand on shirt price when you buy a shirt. We've got some really nice shirts.
And we will have shirts for sale at the event that day?
Yeah, we're going to have some shirts to sell that day. But you can register from eleven to one, the day of the event. If you don't pre-register, you can come, they can come that day, pre-register from eleven to one. They cut the registration off to one because they drove the circuit. And they said it takes about two hours, but that's without stopping and getting out going, getting cards. Plus they're hiding a duck at each location. You find one of the ducks and bring it back to the drag strip and you get some kind of a prize. I know if there's one of the prizes, then they get certificate from real job, I know that, I don't know what the others are.
I think each of them are supposed to be a twenty-five dollar bounty for finding, if you break it down.
Tell them about the, what you just came up with.
What's that?
What the raffle that you just came up with.
Oh, yeah, they'll be doing raffles, some raffles too, and a fifty-fifty drawing. But on the raffles, I got contacted Dave Dyson over at Marina Rowena this morning and asked him if they could donate a, a prize that we could use for one of the raffle prizes. And he's donated a double decker, free double decker pontoon rail for one day. And I don't have the details on it yet, there will be, you know, I'm sure you won't be able to do it on a holiday weekend or something like that, you know? And I don't know what the details are yet, but that, that will be one of the raffle prizes. And I'm not sure what all of the raffle prizes they've got yet. And then there's, um, to wind things up that evening, they're going to start, they're going to start opening the cards at one, or at four. And, uh, I guess we're opening cards from four to six. Everybody that registers is going to get a wristband to wear. And when you get to the card stop, you've got to have your wristband, you've got a card, cards are sealed in an envelope. Um, you can't open your cards until you get back to the drag strip that evening. All cards will be opened in the presence of some of the event staff. And then they'll score the hands, see who's got the best hand. That's going to last from four to six and then sometime after six, they're going to do. Once it gets dark, there's one, they've got a light show, I forgot what they call it, remember? Glow, oh, glow, that's what they call it. A lot of the Jeeps have Jeep people that spend a lot of money on their Jeeps putting these expensive light kits on them, you know, kind of underleaf that shine down on the ground. And they're, they're really pretty, they saw them out here at the, uh, special call meeting we had, they brought a few over here. So they're having, that's going to be one of the events they have. And whoever's judged to have the best looking lights will win the trophy for that, too. Uh, but we're going to leave the drag strip with them, lease that door, come down, circle the monument. And then there will be a photographer here on the monument. If they want to have their picture made, they can have the picture made, the photographer will, I guess, upload them online the way I.
They're right, right in front of the double boy, huh?
Yeah. I guess the photographer's going to love to put things on the line and then they can walk in there and look at the pictures about their pictures.
And a band.
And a band, we've got Shane Cole and his son, and I apologize to Shane, I don't remember what he says his son's name was, you know? But they're going to be there playing music that evening during the card opening and that kind of stuff.
I think there's going to be a DJ there during the day also.
DJ during the day, all day, during the day, yes.
So it's going to be a pretty big event, so hopefully we'll have good weather and a good turnout and a safe event. Also, that's the main thing, you know, that it's fun and everybody has a good time and.
And let me hit all these sponsors, actually, I don't think I've got them all with me. Our First National Bank, they was really great to us. Jamestown Auto Sales, Philip Gaskins, he was really, he's been really good to us. Randy Harde, Superior Battery, the Bank of Jamestown, Unlimited Marine, Don Franklin in Russell Springs. They were, they were not only a sponsor, but they're also one of the brings, uh, maybe a couple of Jeeps off of the lot that they want to have for sale, come over, bring them over and put them on display that day. PCS Real Estate, she was really good to us, McKinney Blair Insurance. And then, gosh, there was a, there was numerous others that I can't even. David Rexro, Coach Rexro. Quick Blue, Rusty Brains, Quick Blue.
Quick Blue, yeah, several places have summer set.
Bluegrass dumpsters.
The grass dumpsters.
Bluegrass dumpsters, they're donating us a dumpster, use of a dumpster. And I'm not sure of the, the company name that's going to donate the use of a couple of porta potties. It wasn't Hill, but I can't remember what's the name of it was.
I'm not sure.
But anyway, yeah, we've had a lot of, a lot of good sponsors and I apologize that I can't remember all of those. And I don't think I've got them today, I'm going to wear a ribbon, but. That's about it.
I think it'll be a, a big turnout, I believe it'll be a good show.
So October the 11th, on Saturday?
Eleven eighteen.
Eleven eighteen.
And, and the checkpoints, the, the card spots will be stopped, seven stops, seven stops where you get a card and make your best hand. And we've got various places around the county, you know? So a lot of these people that are not from here, get to see the county, lower end, upper end, you know, they get to be all, all over the place, so.
Actually, let's hit the card stops there, too.
But you got.
I know them.
You know them?
I do.
Well, then, you, go ahead, I don't.
No, you go ahead.
No, I don't, because I don't know them. I mean, I do, but I, I'll forget one or two of them.
Well, I may too, but I may need help, but I have real job, uh, and the country club and down at, um, Krill's Borough.
Rockhouse.
Rockhouse, down at the, down there, um, and.
Fish Hatcher's.
The Fish Hattery, and then.
The Vista Center.
Twenty dollars.
Superior Rotary and Star Theater and Champion's Garage.
Yeah, you got them.
Derrick, that's trying to get them to come up, come up Ramsey Creek, make the rally at Ramsey Creek.
We should be ready for them.
Oh, I'll meet them, yeah.
So anyway, yeah, good stuff.
I'll be there.
There's a lot of interest through that, uh, Jeeps are Wild Facebook page. It's an event page that the 606, uh, Jeep Association has created. And you can log on there, uh, you go on there and, uh, pre-register to enter the poker round or you can buy t-shirts or whatever there. But there's, looks like there's been quite a bit of interest shown. I mean, I don't know how many they've got signed up, pre-registered yet, but it looks like if you go to the page, it looks like there's been quite a bit of interest, so we're hoping it'll be a big event.
So, yeah, October has quite a bit going on after that. Of course, that's the 11th and then, uh, I did get a text from Zach Smith at Jamestown. They are going to do, the kids coming to town again this year, you know, they had stopped that for numerous years, but last year they came back. And so they will be coming back to Jamestown again for trick or treating during the day. And then, of course, we'll have Trumpet Tree on Halloween. If you may know, what's the thirty-first fall on? I'm assuming it'll be.
Friday, I think.
Is it a Friday?
I feel like it is.
Normally we have it on that unless it falls on a Sunday, so that's, I'm assuming that Friday will be, if that's the thirty-first, it'll be. I'm assuming we will do Trumpet Tree.
Yeah, it's going to be Friday, actually.
Mm-hmm, everybody's off, the kids will see that the next day. So that's planned, and, uh, we get through that. And the first Saturday in December, we have Christmas on the square. And so we've already started working on that, we've already got the, the horses and the cars, we've got that booked. And there's going to be a new addition this year, we're going to actually, and ice skating. I think that's going to be set up over in the, uh, over where Lake County Properties is, over there, that corner, that quadrant over there by Back Park, in that parking lot. I think that's the plan, that could change, they may be going to look at it and say, this would be a better area. But I think right now, there's plenty of room right there, and then there's Back Park close to it. close to it. So I feel like that would probably be the best avenue to set up the, the skating park. So that's going to be added and then we're hoping to add some more vendors and get, uh...
It's last year, she do skate.
So we're, we're hoping to add a few more things this year, you know, to kind of keep it, uh, going and keep putting a few more things new that keep regular people there. So anyway, that's kind of the working process, kind of waiting till we get to the Jeep Fest to really get, uh, we've got to work on a committee for Christmas on the square that will help with that with new ideas and stuff. So hopefully since the Jeep Fest is over, that'll be something we get rolling with and, and get working on that. So pretty much full year and then January, roll around, it's time to start working on Lake Fest again. So there you go. It's a full, full term of stuff going on, but, um, I think that's about the only thing that I have. Jeff, Nathan, you all have anything going on or anything you want to share with us or?
Just what me and you talked about the other day, those factors.
Those what?
Those factors that we spoke about the other day.
Okay.
Hazardous, hazardous retirement issue at the county, uh, has been trying to put in place for the sheriff's office. I think there might be some misconception here. We do not have it for our officers. One officer has it that is currently, he is set to retire, uh, next April.
April, yes.
Uh, and this is not for me because I'm retired and I've returned as a retiree, but we have four officers that have not had it. And we should look into it or...
I think that's...
Give me the idea of it, so.
We've had several conversations about it and I think that is something that I feel like, you know, is going to have to be, uh, presented pretty soon that we're going to have to talk about and try to, uh, we have actually, Debbie's done a little research on what percentage of what, uh, as, you know, ever since that it's kind of come up, we've kind of talked about and tried to look at what kind of increase that it would be to the city. So we'll continue to work on and getting new numbers as we can and because I do feel like that's something that we're going to have to address sometime soon.
Just a, just a history lesson for some of the people that weren't on the, on the council. And we went past this year in two thousand and three. I had worked here since ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-seven. I converted my time and I retired for twenty-two and a half years. There was about five officers. Jeremy Lynn is going to be the fifth one with over fifteen years of service. So it locks people in and you know as well as I do the people that we went through, the budgeted officers that have come and stayed for six months and go to a better department with better pay, better benefits. The hazardous is the, is the, is the main thing there, so.
And you, when you, lots of things that people, I guess, don't realize is when you had to go out every time you get a new person, if you don't have someone that's already been through the academy and been through all that, a lot of expense there, a lot. And we have kind of helped a little bit with that by requiring a contract. We have a three-year contract when we send them that if they leave and go to another place, then they have to buy that contract out because we're spending all the money to send them and then they go somewhere else that somebody else offers them a little more. So I think, you know, it's going to be the future thing that you're going to have to take care of your officers to be able to keep them and that's what we always, we want to try to keep. We've got good officers. We've got, uh, a real good crew right now and we want to hold on to them. So that's something I think that's going to be in the near future. We're really going to have to do some numbers on and look at, try to get something done. Anything else? Anything?
Thank you.
Chris? Anything?
They know the city park, we're putting a new camera, security cameras, this is me.
Okay.
Like two cameras. I've had to tie these in the police department where they can watch footage, uh, record footage up, you know, if anything happens. We've got the new sign, I think they're making post career, uh, way it's booked.
The one that's in the building there?
Yeah, the one that's in the building, we took it to Russell Springs to have the post made to put it in the ground. And my question on that, are you wanting the light that side or are you just going to put it in there and leave it?
Well, I don't know. That's something we'll need to...
Well, and that, and that's why it probably does. I mean, that's something gets...
We'll look at that and see what needs to be done.
Uh, we'll probably have to have, we'll put a meter over there on the light bulb, you know, so it can get powered out, too. Uh, the way that tired stuff up over there, I wouldn't put anything on there, I'm going to just seal it up.
And that, and that's a big purpose for the cameras that we have.
I've got the cam, the new camera system's got eight cameras where we had four. So we've got the concession stand, we've got one in there, uh, you know, to monitor everything, go down with the concession stand. I've put two more on the outside of the concession stand for the roads and the entrances. So you can see everything. I mean, you, you can see the whole city park now with the camera system.
Yeah, and we, it needed, we needed more.
Yeah.
It'd be over there because there is, you put something up and it's tore down. We even had our cameras.
Yeah, they even wore cameras down.
Two of them that tore our cameras down.
But we, but they got power. We had footage.
And then when we first bought the playground equipment, if you remember, which was very costly, it was the next day we had damage to that, so.
Yeah, and we didn't have cameras yet.
At the time, there was no cameras. So little by little, we're trying to get to where everything's protected and we can take care of what city property and, uh, make sure that it's, you know, taken care of. That's all you can do.
Just letting you know about the sack, I mean, you know?
We will.
I, I didn't, I know we're putting a frame on, he's put four by four post and making a frame, just put it in the frame. But, you know, if, if we want a light, we could put the lights on above the sack.
Okay.
Uh, just something like that.
We'll look at that. We'll look and see what's done.
Yeah, just, just, you, you all talked about, discussed a particular one, but I think it would look better with it myself.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it'd look better than that. We were over there the day with cameras and I've never seen so many people at city park. It was covered. I mean, there were people everywhere.
Well, and now, you know, Russell's bringing some of their filter down, too, because there are turpens and fields there, so that's bringing more people, I'm sure, you know, because there's not enough, there's not enough parks for everything that goes on anyway. And then when you take a couple of them down, it makes it even worse, so.
We're working on it. It's going to look good, I think. And we have very, like, we'll be good.
Good.